Thank you. Welcome to tonight's Board of Selectment meeting. I'm going to read the agenda. We often, if we're running ahead, we might take some items out of order, but this is what we're going to try to do tonight. 7:00 PM, Community Input. 7:05 Finance Committee Appointment. 7:15 Update About Pilot Composting Program With the DPW Superintendent And The Household Recycling Committee. At 7:30, The Finance Director. Shoot, stop it. And at 7:02, An Unwanted So- Entertainment Here.
There we go.
This is where I want to be.
That's why they did it away with the live streaming.
Yeah. Okay, I apologize. Where was I? Finance Director Reestablishing The Insurance Advisory Committee Approving At 7:45 Approving The Fiscal 2025 Fire Department Payroll Changes. At 8:00 PM Reviewing And Approving The Remaining 2019 Annual Appointments. Meeting With Some Members Of The Deer Control Committee And Discussing Technology IT, Whether It Should Be A Committee Or Working Group. At 8:45 Selectment Policy And Guideline Review. We Thought We'd Look At The Updating Selectment's Policy Number Five Transfer Station Stickers. Update About Computer Email And Internet Use Policy And Amendments To The Personnel Bylaw. At 9:15 Town Council Update About The Organization And Form Of Government, But That's Not Going To Happen Because He's Not Coming. He's Going To Send Us A Memo For Next Week. 9:00 So I Suppose That At 9:15 We'll Then Do The Town Administrator's Report Instead. And At 9:30 The Liaison Reports. 9:45 Approval Of Minutes And Hopefully At About The Same Time.
Well, slack built into the schedule.
Yes, yeah, we've got lots of slack in here. Adjournment. Okay. Is There Anybody Here For Community Input This Evening? Nobody.
Well, all right. I guess I'm not certain. What's the agenda again? Looks like you spoke about seven.
Seven, Community Input.
Yeah, I guess.
If you come and use this microphone, because it doesn't amplify.
That's fine.
Okay.
Peter Yeller, 484 Cross Street. So I'm a member of the Planning Board. And my Chair called and asked me to come down. He's out of town. But I guess it was brought to our attention that there was a ZBA decision regarding 23 Bedford Road.
Uh huh.
That where the ZBA decision has allowed, where that property requires so many parking spots, the ZBA decision said you can use public space for that. And while I'm not representing the Planning Board, I'm offering the, you know, support to say if we were to appeal that, we would maybe, you know, request that the Board of Selectment consider that.
Okay. Thank you. I do, and we can't discuss that tonight. I'm aware of the issues, and I am working on it. We're hoping to be able to take care of this, maybe short of an appeal.
Can you fill us in next week, though?
I would be happy to put it on the agenda for next week.
Appeal period?
Next meeting, you mean?
Next meeting, yes, we will be still, because if we're meeting to 1st of July.
The next meeting's the 9th.
The 9th, no, then we're not within the appeal meeting. Okay. I was really hoping not to discuss this publicly at this time.
I'm not sure how we.
Yeah.
How we get our input.
Seems that the drills are pretty interesting.
Yeah, I'm trying to avoid one board appealing another board's decision by having some offline conversations.
Is it appropriate just because we're not discuss it, but at least just understand what the issue is? I know nothing about it.
Okay, the issue is that they have a distinctive structure in the form of the barn that they're going to rebuild.
Across from the library.
The building, yes, sorry.
This is 2123.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
The house and barn.
Right, and they will have 15 employees, and quarterly they have meetings of 50 employees. And they do not have adequate parking on-site. And the decision asks them not to use any of the public parking areas at Ferns, Center Park, or the library to accommodate the parking needs of that use, but instead to use on-street parking, for instance, on School Street and on Church Street. The problem is that in our bylaw, I can't tell you exactly, this is 13.3.6.1 or something like that, for distinctive buildings, it specifically says they may not use on-street parking to accommodate parking needs for that use. So they have issued, it looks like they may have issued a permit.
Special permit.
A special permit for something which is not allowed by our bylaw.
Okay.
So I'm trying.
And this is for some future use, or because they're not using the building now, are they?
No, it's so that they'll build that, rebuild the barn and then use it as an office.
This is after it's rebuilt?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I think if I could just complement what you've said, I think the address has enough space for seven parking spots, and they're talking about 15 full-time, and then having this quarterly that might spill over to the public space. But still, that would leave eight to 10 that would be public space.
And that doesn't even count the four parking spots that they're required to have for the two residences that they're. So they have seven parking spots for the four that they require for the residences, and I forget, 15, he said, I forget how many.
Yeah, so my, exactly. My planning director said 15.
That's what I remembered, 15 for the.
So it definitely.
So the issue is the zoning Board of Appeals may have approved something that they couldn't, they shouldn't have approved because it's against the bylaw, and we just need to talk to them and figure out what's going on?
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
So we're asking that you consider that.
They may need to talk to the applicant as well. I believe that the building inspector does not feel he can issue any building permits on this, so I wanted to try to get this, but I don't want to.
Is this all dealt with as part of them doing the planning process? Or did this just come up much later?
I think some of the questions were answered during the planning process, but I'm.
They haven't been in front of the Planning Board for quite some time. They came before us last year prior to the last town meeting, and we gave them advice, but they didn't go beyond that.
So they don't have enough parking spaces for what they want to do in general, but they also want parking for 50 people?
Yes.
On a.
Once a quarter.
Right.
But still, it's just, it's the concept of saying you can use public space.
They could use public space for that.
No, no, Planning Board, the zoning.
The zoning Board of Appeals.
The zoning Board of Appeals.
And they, but they also understand that Ferns actually isn't public parking, so.
I know, but they said you cannot use any of these.
Center Park.
Center Park, library, or the thing, and.
That they had to use on-street.
That they had to use on-street, although our bylaw specifically prohibits on-street parking solutions for distinctive building uses. Don't ask me why, but that's the way it's written. So we have a conflict.
One of those Carvana vending machines.
Well, actually, actually, we think that we, that Cross Town Connect might be a solution, that they could park maybe at Blue Jay or someplace else off remotely and use a bus to shuttle them.
I think the, what I've been told is that the conversation came up to say school and church would be available for that, and it just puts them not much farther outside the center. So it does still, it's going to contribute to the school, which has parking of its own. So I just, as a Planning Board member, we're just, we're outside of, we're not meeting, we're not going to have quorum in the next couple days, and so we're just, I was told to come down, offer your support if you wanted to proceed with a appeal, that we would be, you know, the two, the three members I spoke to, but again, it's not a quorum.
I would prefer not to go that route.
Yeah.
And all avoid it.
We'll have to do something.
I got to bring it up. They always ask to bring it up.
The intent is to get agreement on a solution prior to the appeal date.
That'd be great. Yeah, exactly.
And how are we going to do that if we don't meet again?
The Chair will work on it.
Okay.
Chair's been working on it all day, which is why I couldn't remember Marie's name.
And Town Council's involved as well. Council reviewing the decision.
The Chair got the, got the email at midnight last night.
So, yeah, just to talk all the way through it, it's like, so if we can't get to an agreement, what are we going to do because there's an appeal period?
I might have to call a special meetings.
Okay.
Yeah. But I'm really working hard to not, I mean, I find.
So we may have a special, a special meeting. I think that's absolutely the right answer. So, okay.
Yeah, right. I mean, and I'm.
What's the, what's the appeal deadline?
July.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I really do not want one board.
Right, right. Going after.
Going, I mean, if I can at all, avoid it.
Now, I'll bring that back to Jonathan, that you can't just do one board. I do think, yeah, there is support, there's some.
We have.
Not yet.
Well, I think our preference would be to not do any appeal.
To try to work it.
I agree with the gentleman.
Right.
I should know all my Board of Selectment members, but I would definitely agree with your comment.
Yeah.
Alan.
Alan, very good.
Yes.
Sometimes it's better to go in conneato.
Well done.
Thanks, Peter.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
All right.
Finance Committee Appointment. Won't you join us?
Hi.
I am absolutely thrilled with this.
I do, yeah.
Yeah, I told you you were trouble. Then I met you, so.
It's nice to meet everyone. Erin Delia.
Nice to meet you.
I did bring some resumes and.
We got it.
We got them.
Yeah. It got sent out ahead of time.
Yes.
Shall I tell a little, a little bit about who I am?
Sure, yes.
So my wife and my six-year-old son, we moved into the community last November. You know, I want to, you know, I'm already in government. I worked for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. My career, I did five or six years of banking as a junior analyst, started with Shamet Bank. Not many Shamet branches anymore. And then went to Fleet, another bank that closed. There you go. I have this record of.
I know, and I have, I still have some checks.
Maybe we don't want to appoint her.
They just got purchased, they didn't close.
We'll still have Carlisle here at the end. To make you feel better, I worked for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts over my career for about 11 years, 10 or 11 years, so that hasn't closed, so that's, that, and I started off in what's called the Executive Office Administration of Finance as an analyst there. I was Director of Finance. I've done two stints at Director of Finance. I think my first one was in 2001, and then recently went back. Currently the CFO for a few state agencies, including unemployment, workers' comp for the state, a lot of labor agencies. But I've always, had done some nonprofit work over my career for kids. Kids are like, I have a passion for helping kids and like to get involved in my community. You know, I, we just recently moved from Newton and never felt, you know, like Newton was going to be my permanent home. I actually went to Brookline High School, and Newton North was our competitor. So when we moved to Newton, I, you know, I told my wife I didn't think I wanted to get involved in local government there, just, I felt like, you know, I was betraying my roots here. But Carlisle felt pretty comfortable that, you know, you know, we're probably going to be here for the next 20, 30 years of our lives and wanted to contribute. And after meeting a number of people, you know, talking to Tim, you know, recommendations how I can get involved, the Finance Committee seemed like a natural fit. So I hope I'll get your support in that, you know, if you appoint me, I'll do my best to contribute and, you know, give reasonable advice.
So it's a perilous first step, because once we get to a little bit, we just totally suck you in.
And we'll also ask what your wife does.
That was full disclosure, so you're still, okay.
So. Your son payable.
He's only six. He's only six.
That's okay. He's more mature than Luke.
He's not here to defend himself.
I will, I will take that comment.
I wouldn't touch that one. Yeah.
We're transitioning him over to the school. We had him in private school, because we knew we were going to transition, and we literally looked at probably 120 homes over like two years, or a lot, and saw just about every community and fell in love here. It was, it was kind of funny, like, and I know I'm going probably too deep, we probably saw three homes over a span of two years we actually thought about, like putting an offer in, and two of them were in Carlisle, same day. And we're like, okay, we're done. We're definitely focusing here, and I just think it's a great community, and I want to get back.
You chose well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And we really, really need you.
And appreciate very much your willingness to serve.
I think it'd be a great fit.
It'd be great. So shall I move?
Is there a recommendation from Tim Com?
Yes, they, yes.
They have viewed Erin, and they do recommend her.
Yes.
Great.
I'm surprised that's not in here. I think we are, I guess I get the memo, sorry.
All right, I move to appoint Erin Delia. Is that how you say it?
Yeah, I can't believe you got my last name right.
Well, you said it first.
I've never had anybody, Professor, it's usually Delia or, but you know.
Well, former kindergarten teacher, and I worked really hard to remember names. Anyway, to appoint Erin Delia, 233 Elizabeth Ridge Road, to the Finance Committee, to a term that will expire June 30th, 2020.
Second.
Any further discussion? A little some favor? All right.
Aye.
That was, you know, it was, thank you very much, and welcome to the family.
Appreciate it.
Why is it not 2021?
This is her year, is she completing somebody's term?
He's, he's completing Tom Smith's.
I think Tom was up.
This, yeah.
Oh. So it should be 20.
22.
Yes, let's, can we?
Three years, right? Uh oh. Did you know that, Erin? Okay.
Good.
All right.
Sorry, I should have looked at that first.
That's okay. You want me to do it again, or?
Yeah.
Okay. I move to appoint Erin Delia, 233, Delia, 233 Elizabeth Ridge Road, to the Finance Committee, to a term that will expire June 30th, 2022.
Second.
A little some favor?
Aye.
Update About The Pilot Composting Program.
Lana and Rob.
I see Lana and Rob. Where is Dave, Gary?
Could not make it tonight, but he gave me his important, like I shared with Lana, I think.
Great. Okay. Lana, why don't you at least, and Rob, there's two chairs.
Come on up. Sure. Or do you want to?
Lana, why don't you? Close it yourself.
All right.
Well, personally, I've been using the composting bins, and I, see, the only thing that troubled me was today, I opened it up, and there were a lot of banana peels with the Chiquita labels on them. So I guess we still haven't gotten.
Message through.
The message through, that the little labels, those little sticky labels have got to be peeled off the avocados and the, and the bananas.
The fruits and vegetables.
Well, the apples, you tend to do that before you eat it, because you will eat the skin, but the other ones, like bananas.
Did you eat the banana?
Slipped through.
It's great fiber.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So congratulations.
Well, well, I'm, I hope I'm not going to disappoint you by saying this, but we haven't had a single complaint.
In fact, I received an email from one resident that wanted to know if we'd be able to make it available even in days that the transfer station wasn't open.
Right, right.
So they.
Interested.
I mean, just push them to the, the front there where they will.
We can talk to Gary about.
Throw them over the fence, you mean?
The gate's open, but.
You know.
Well, anyway. Well, we have a pickup schedule too, so we have to be cognizant of that and the number of bins. So it seems to be going full speed ahead, no problems, lots of positive feedback that I think we're all getting for you users here at the table. I hope it's been an easy process. Black Earth is extremely easy to work with. I've gotten a couple of comments that they've submitted questions to Black Earth directly, and they haven't gotten a response, and I, you know, I'm happy to call Black Earth and just say, you know, is there some, something different we should be doing? Because otherwise, Robert or I get the question, and some of the questions, I do have to defer to them, because I really don't know the answers. But it's interesting the level of depth people go into with their questions. I mean, I could never have imagined the detail that people was. But your point, Kate, is well taken about the little sticky labels, because I think there was one mention, and to me, that speaks to communications about the program, both from the standpoint of how it's working, and also from the standpoint, well, of how it's working, and just little tips and hints that we can give people. Now, one thing that, it's great news that people seem very positive about this, and Gary has said it's going very well, the transfer station attendants, a couple of them had some reservations before it started, but everybody seems to be happy now. But we did this for a reason, and the reason is we're happy people are happy, but the reason really is to reduce the solid waste tonnage. And right now, we don't have a clue, you know. So one, one of the things. Have a clue how much solid waste we've been producing this on. No, no, that we know. We want to know if this is having an impact, and if it is having an impact, how significant is the impact? Because that's the whole point. We have, and Carlisle, big solid waste tonnage issue. So in order to get that data, which is really important and informative, what we'd like is to have data going back ideally five years, that would be month solid waste tonnage. I'm not talking about the recycling, the stuff that's diverted, but only the solid waste tonnage. So I'm not sure if we have records that go back, but we're talking month by month, not the year total, which is what we normally deal with when we do a report. But to really understand, are there seasonal variations, you know, ebbs and flows with regard to how it works, to really, to really understand what's going on with this, that data, I think, would be extremely helpful. So that's one thing that we would like to add, because right now, we don't really know. So there's that. And the other.
Is on your committee, right? Have you asked him for?
Yeah, so have you asked him for? Not for the month by month, and also going back five years, because we want to have some history on this, so. Isn't that where the information would come from?
Well, it is, it is, and we report that data annually to.
No, but I mean, would Gary have month-by-month information?
I'm sure he'd have the slips for when they.
The tipping fee.
When they bring it out of town.
So the.
He's been aggregating it, you know, by year, so I'm sure he's got it, you know, month by month or.
You don't need him to do anything, you just need him to transfer that information to you.
Precisely. And it's the, it's the ease of access. I mean, that's the one thing. It would be really nice if we could just get into a routine where he automatically submits that to your office, and then we get it, so that.
Committee, so he could just give you the information, right?
Send it to the committee.
Yeah, why would it have to go to?
He doesn't do email with us, so I don't know how that information would be communicated.
I have a computer. He doesn't do email with anybody.
Ah. And we're also asking for information going back, and I, my thinking is that this is the correct body, too.
So he has like a cigar box with those chits in it? If we could deliver that to you, would that be?
It would be nice if at least they were clipped by year, but, and maybe in chronological order, but yeah, I guess we'll deal with it, you know. Maybe we should be, go, figure out with Gary how to set up a system going forward that would allow for a monthly. Just a spreadsheet.
Yeah.
Just a spreadsheet, so it's the.
Yeah, I mean, he could certainly bring it into our office, and Jen would be happy.
Jen is always happy, but.
It's a snap, Jen.
He doesn't have any staff.
Yeah, yeah.
If it's billed monthly, there's probably financial records of paying the bill every month, which would give you the information you need.
Well, I'm a lot more interested in the tonnage.
Well, but you could probably.
And that would be, yeah, that would be good, too.
You might just have to divide by 75.
They charge us per ton.
Feet per ton, right?
Right, right. And that fee for, per ton.
So it's probably easier to get the information from the financial people to pay the bills.
Okay, the thing is that your committee is requesting access to that information.
Correct.
From whomever.
Right.
Tim, could you help kind of, either with Gary or with Priscilla, or with them, not this week, because it's end of year for her, but after that?
Yeah.
So it's.
Yeah, it's not a, it's not a big rush, because I mean, it's going to take a few.
It's available.
Months for this to come in.
Are we still at two bins?
We're, well, what, we actually have four bins, and so they assess how full the bins are, and if they need to drag out a third one or a fourth one, they're able to do it. What I'm not sure of is how many bins actually get picked up. They come, they, is Black Earth, they come twice a week to pick up, reline the bins, and I don't know.
It says it's never been less than two and sometimes three bins.
Okay, okay.
It's been three weeks since we.
Yeah, June 4th.
Not much.
Start on June 4th, right. So, and that's, that's good to know, and that's the other thing. Each bin holds roughly 200 pounds, but it depends on the content, because you've got cardboard in there, so the solid waste tonnage is really the most, the best data that we could use to assess if there's any difference. So the other piece is communications piece, and I'm very happy that all the reports that were required were submitted, so we were able to apply for the recycling dividends program.
13th deadline.
Right, yeah, I'm not sure how many points we're going to be awarded. I'm not sure if we asked for eight or 10, but anyway.
Well, they, but I don't know.
Okay, well, right. So that would give us the maximum based on the point score that we have, if for whatever reason they deny our request for the, for the grant. We automatically will get the minimum small-scale initiatives grant of 750, which is not, you know, we can certainly use that. So what we, I think what we also need to do is develop a brochure, something that we could send home to families, and it seems to make sense not to have done it over the summer, but late summer, early fall, so that we know families are back from vacation, vacations, et cetera, so that they've got something they can hold on to regarding how that works. So that's it. So thank you.
Thank you.
So for the yay and nay thing, I mean, I think you should even just put a sticker under the nay, you know, because I actually looked, because I, when I saw those stickers on the banana peels, I kind of looked down the nay, and I didn't, it wasn't clear that you're not supposed to put stickers.
Because it's not really listed. I think I indicated that in an email message, yeah.
But it would be nice to just add it to that little sign, because I think people do scan it.
Well, that sign was really meant to be temporary, it's not a permanent sign, and I've been trying to connect with Gary on what would work in that location as a more permanent sign, like a metal sign. So there's nothing to affix a metal sign. So, anyway, we've got to figure that part out, but that's our chance to refine that list. And we can simplify it a little bit, because people will have access to the paper list with more minute detail, and we can add things like fruit and veggie stickers, nay, you know.
Lana, one other thing just about, which, hey, I think this program is great, and I've been participating, too, which is terrific, but I'm just wondering, when you started it up, you know, you sort of did a, what we call it, a soft launch, right? And not a lot of publicity. So, in addition to this idea of having something ready at the beginning of the fall, have you thought about doing anything between now and then in terms of either just updates in the mosquito? I mean, I think even just a report at this point about the number, you know, what Black Earth is taking away and comments you've got, maybe you want to, you know, have somebody write a letter to the mosquito or something, right?
I've asked.
Stickers, or, I'm just thinking it would be, I think it'd be good to be doing, continuing to do publicity around this.
Right, and that's a great point, and yes, we will do that. You know, I think it'd be great if we know, well, we know what our solid waste tonnage average is now, and we could say, we'd like, you know, supposedly, if you remove food waste, you're reducing the solid waste tonnage by 25 to 30 percent. That's if everybody's doing it right. But if we could set a target of, say, even, let's reduce it 15 percent, start low. But if we had one of those thermometer thingies, anybody know an artist? I mean, just somebody who could just fact, you know-
I don't think that takes an artist.[609.12][609.12](laugh)
Could do that.
I draw flies, but I could make you a thermometer.
Okay.
Seeing the submissions to the art show last weekend, I think we have kids who can do this.
Okay, well, that'd be great. And things like a PSA on cable news with kids.
That might be a good intro. I mean, have a kids' contest, you know, for the banner, because the kids then tell their parents, it gets, you know, kids are great ambassadors for these kinds of things, as you know.
I was also thinking you might want to talk to the school about including something in, you know, those going back, going home packets, unless they're doing it all online.
Oh, that's-
To have something go home-
That's actually a good idea.
Through the school, too, in the fall.
That's great, yeah, the possibilities are endless.[659.02][659.02](laugh)
Well, later, we're going to be talking about transfer station stickers and things like that, I don't know if you want to stick around for that.
How much later?[668.41][668.41](laugh)
We've got some other stuff.
We have some other things we have to do, but, well, but they're fairly routine, but anyway.
Okay, all right, well, thank you.
An hour and 15, an hour and 15 minutes.
Well, yeah, but, yeah.[682.52][682.52](laugh) I don't think it's going to take that long. Thank you.
All right, thank you both, yeah.
Bonnie, Finance Director, reestablished the Insurance Advisory Committee. And there's somebody there that would be really excellent addition to that advisory committee.[707.73][707.73](laugh)
I know.
Our newest member of the FinCom, who's just appointed tonight.
And foolishly stuck around.
Yeah, and foolishly stuck around.
So, yes, I'm here to basically, to ask the board to reestablish the Insurance Advisory Committee. I looked on the website, I couldn't find where the committee had been appointed before, or when it had been established, really couldn't find anything on it, so.
It probably was before your time.
Well, no, it was, it was active when Larry Barton, toward the end of Larry's career here, when we had some changes to make in the health insurance arena.
Okay, yeah.
But not, it has been kind of moribund since then, so we do need to reactivate. Something that came up in bargaining with the police officers, Alan will recall that we committed to reinvigorating the advisory committee, the Insurance Advisory Committee, you know, for-
And do you recall, was it a committee or was it a working group?
It was a committee.
The statute defines it as a committee.
It does, okay, well, so it should be a committee.
Yep, and the statute's very specific about the makeup. It says that there needs to be eight primary members, you can have more, but there has to be this eight core group. So, the primary members are made up of seven people appointed by the membership of the committee, the organizations that it serves. So, if it's a bargaining unit, the bargaining unit picks the, they elect them or appoint them or whatever. You can also, so we have four bargaining units. The way that I've seen it work in other communities is they'll have the bargaining units represented, and then a non-union management employee, a non-union, non-management employee, and then any other groups that the town feels is important. And I know that, like, the DPW, they don't have a bargaining unit, but they're kind of recognized distinctly in some circumstances, so I called that one out, too.
Six.
And then, the final member has to be a retiree that's appointed by the Board of Selectmen. So, that would be something, we could send notices out to the current list of retirees to see if anybody's interested in serving, and then have them-
And I have a question about that.
Sure.
I mean, one of the stipulations, each active member has to be a benefit eligible employee, but is a retiree considered in that category?
Active members, so a retiree's not an active member.
Oh, is that, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, right.
Got it.
I see, yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Now, the terms on these, I've seen it, you know, different in various communities. I've seen them do three-year appointments, one-year appointments, two-year appointments. I just put, for conversation starters, you know, at a one-year level here, there's some benefit to, you know, having it done every year, you know, people change, the demographics in different departments change. There's benefits, I think, to having a two- or three-year appointment, because there is a learning curve, you know, to kind of getting involved in something like this. But it's the board's discretion to decide how you want to populate the board.
We don't ever let anybody leave a committee, so.
Right.[896.12][896.12](laugh) But you, could one do staggered terms?
Absolutely, yes.
A quick question, so I'm reading down the list, you know, one town administrator or finance director, and then the last one says appointed by the Board of Selectmen. Who appoints all those other ones?
They're elected or appointed by their bargaining unit or group. So, it's, the school will have an election or, you know, a process that they appoint somebody to the group. And that's also defined in the statute, because I was like, who's, you know, who's actually making the appointments?
Even the non-union employees would have-
Right, they have like a little election or something.
Yeah, but, and I do see that we have a town administrator or the finance director, but I don't see that we have, like, any FinCom or Selectmen on this. Do you think it would be advisable, I mean, are they excluded from being on this? Or, by statute, or?
I don't think that they're excluded from being on it, you know, you can always ask somebody to be on it, but I don't know that they would be-
These people have to be on it.
Right, these ones, yeah.
These people have to be on it. I mean, and I, so I think part of our discussion would be if we think we would like to have more. Well, yeah, I mean, because, you know, if they're not given, if this committee is not given some guidance from either FinCom or Board of Selectmen, I don't know what they're doing out there exactly.
Yeah, this committee's actually supposed to provide recommendations on the group insurance to the Board of Selectmen and to the employee groups. So, it's kind of, I think it's a great thing, because you've got a lot more communication than just, here's the new plan. They've got participation, they've got, you know, they see, you know, what the options are and what they aren't.
Yeah.
And I think having, you know, a finance committee member, you know, represented on there is a good thing, because that's got to get communicated back to FinCom somehow, you know.
I would say finance and Board of Selectmen.
But, and Selectmen, yeah, that's what I was thinking, exactly.
Easy enough to do.
Okay.
So, they'd be reappointed by the Board of Selectmen, and everybody else would be elected. And so, the goal, the charter of this is to evaluate on an annual basis group plans and-
Yes.
And-
Provide recommendations.
But is their goal, because I'm looking at the makeup, is the goal of the committee to try to get the best value for the town? Or is the goal for the committee to try to figure out what new benefits we could be providing to the employees?
It's a little bit of both, because sometimes, you know, you can make plan design changes that will either add to benefits or take away from benefits. But it's the goal of the committee to come up with a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, and then educate the member groups on what, you know, what is, they feel is the best for the town and their employees that are served.
So, I just worry that if we had a committee like this, and they came back and they said, okay, our recommendation is that we add all these benefits and it increases our costs by 40 percent, what do we then do?
That's, that's why I was wondering why we, if we shouldn't have somebody from FinCom or-
Right, start again.
Right, but they've already read it back to their bargaining units.
Yeah.
And so, it's kind of, now, we're in this difficult situation of expectations have been set.
Yeah.
But we don't think that, you know, well, in fact, we know that we can't afford them.
Right. Typically, you know, in the advisory group meetings that I've participated in, we kind of know going in what the budget-
What the budget is.
You know, outlook looks like. We can do that in coordination with the finance committee's, you know, budget message and the Board of Selectmen's budget message that gets delivered. So, it's not just a free-for-all, it's got to be dovetailed within the budget process.
Yeah.
One of the issues is, I mean, in organizations I've worked with in the past, when we've gone to get health insurance, we hired a person who'd negotiate with the providers to get us the best deal, to come up with innovative plans that save both the institution and the employee a significant amount of money, and those have been very successful. Is that, I don't see anything in here that permits that even, much less-
Oh, no, there would be definitely, we have a vendor that handles Gallagher, that handles, you know, helping us with our health insurance plans. Gallagher would be participating in this as a vendor.
Consultant, yeah, okay.
The conversation with the unions, much less so than the level of benefits has been the ratio.
Yes, I understand.
Yes.
Always come, you know, the police bring that up routinely every three years, and so I would expect the conversation would kind of, you know-
Yeah, well, I expect, actually, there's nobody there.
The committee could look at that and-
They could make recommendations.
But it's always the Board of Selectmen's decision as to, you know, do you try to shift that ratio over time? Because I think to do it kind of dramatically in a few years' time is a huge leap.
And we know that we're a bit out of sync with a lot of the other towns in that ratio, and the question is, how do they do it?
In that we pick up, we pick up 50 percent and other towns pick up more?
We pick up a smaller, we, no, the town picks up a smaller, the employee pays more.
The lowest statutorily, 50/50.
Yeah, so it's 50 percent?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
But it's-
But it's lower than what other towns are doing.
At least some, yeah. So, anyway, okay, this is good, yeah. And this is part of, I mean, this is one of the things we said we would do, was reinvigorate this committee, so I'm glad to see we're not dragging our feet, we're going to do it.
So, while we have- Make a motion.
It's on the next page.
Right, but what we're saying is we might be amending it to say, where it says, and one member who should be a retiree, appointed by the Board of Selectmen, and then you'd say two members at large that would be appointed by the Board of Selectmen?
No, one FinCom.
One member from the Board of Selectmen who would be appointed by the Board of Selectmen, and one member from the FinCom.
From the FinCom, okay, specified.
By the FinCom.
Oh, leaving personnel out. We can't have too big of them.
Well, I imagine Priscilla's going to participate in it anyway. I mean, there might be other people that attend the meetings that aren't necessarily on the committee, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't feel bad if she was on it, too.[1307.12][1307.12](laugh) The more you're here.
I was talking about the personnel board.
Oh, okay, I thought you said Priscilla.
That's kind of outside their range.
Yeah, you know, I, you know, instead of town administrator and/or finance director, I would say the finance director and the town administrator in his, as the personnel director. I think the personnel-
Including his role as the personnel director.
Yes, so that's two more.
Yeah, so.
It's easy.
Good luck getting a forum.[1343.12][1343.12](laugh)
Well, many of these people have vested interests in making this work.
Yes, yes.
All right, so how about something like this? I move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to MGL 32B, Section 3, to reestablish the Insurance Advisory Committee, IAC, to include the following-
Physicians.
Twelve, okay, to include the following physicians, there you go, for one-year terms, ending on June 30th, 2020, as follows. So, we're going to go with one-year terms?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, as follows. One, the town administrator in the role as Personnel Director. One, Finance Director, to serve as the IAC Chair, non-voting. One, active from each of the four unions that designate to be duly elected by those unions. One, active non-union management representation, elected from within the Town Hall. One, active non-union, non-management representation, elected from within the Town Hall. One, active non-union representation, elected from the DPW staff. One member who shall be a retiree of the Town of Carlisle, appointed by the Board of Selectmen. One member from the Finance Committee, appointed by the Board of Selectmen. And one member from the Board of Selectmen, appointed by the Board of Selectmen.
Can I just make a small adjustment, a small amendment to that? The first one, it was one that the town administrator used it as his role as a Personnel Director, I would say, including his role as a, so we're just highlighting that there, but it's not limiting it to only that role.
Okay. The amendment is accepted.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
We'll communicate that out.
Yes.
So, we'll get going on that. Thank you.
7:45, approve the fiscal 2020 fire department payroll changes.
We don't yet have those from the front, so we'll work on those, so.
Okay.
Let's do the next one.
So, we're going to move on to approving the remaining 2019, well, now, we have to wait for this, because I'd like to wait. Let's go on to the, your town manager's report, and we'll come back at 8 o'clock, to the, 8 o'clock.
Oh, because we got some dear committee-
Yes, yes.
Dear committee, okay.
Okay. The town administrator's report, first item is the proposed agreement, the Friends of Center Park Task Force. It wasn't in the pack around, I hope I got it in the pack, it was about, what's on it? Last week, we, this is when we threw you together, so we do have the, the amended number nine, with Council to-
Yeah.
I recommend the board approve the agreement, the 2019 Center Park.
Going to have a motion?
I move the board approve the terms proposed in the agreement between the Town of Carlisle and the Friends of Center Park Task Force as revised effective immediately through June 30th, 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That was unanimous.
Okay, and we should have in front of you also, another memo from the Finance Director to just let, regarding some necessary year-end transfers, they're kind of a smaller variety, not yet, they haven't assembled the requests for the elevator issue, but there were some transfers that needed to be made to balance out certain accounts.
I love the $1 one.
Yeah.
What was that, the monster on debt, that $1?
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 33B, to approve year-end transfers between various items of the fiscal year 2019 budget as detailed above in a memo from Bonnie Fleck, Finance Director, dated June 11th, 2019.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that was unanimous.
The next item in the report, Clark Farm Market, now requesting a series of one-day air wine licenses for upcoming events, I guess that must be going pretty well, back again, additional dates. Got a suggested motion with regards to-
Are these, these are-
Are these Saturday nights, is that what this is? 3:30 to 8:00, 7:11?
7:11 and then to 7:25.
Till you in a minute.
Because next, yeah, next Wednesday's the fourth.
7:11 is the Thursday.
Oh.
7:25 is a Thursday.
So, Thursday evenings.
It's, it's Thursday nights, yeah.
What is in the motion, Saturday? No, it just says the dates, yeah, I'm just curious, which day of the week?
It looks like it's every two weeks, yeah.
It's for pizza and, Michael, yeah, it's got, and the parking is restricted, so he said it would never exceed 20 people.
And, as usual, we already have the sign-off of the chief of police.
I move to approve a one-day wine and malt beverages license to Jeffrey Freeman, owner of Clark Farm Market pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 138, Section 14, for community events to be held at 201 Bedford Road on July 11th, 2019, July 25th, 2019, August 8th, 2019, August 22nd, 2019, September 15th, 2019, and September 19th, 2019, between the hours of 5:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., subject to the application, providing a host liquor liability insurance certificate.
Your second?
Second.
And any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That was unanimous.
All right, and you will also, the question of Conservation Commission for their annual transfer from the Intents account funded through the transister for fiscal '20, the request this year's $4,210.34 to fund those hours for the year, I'll just note that that will bring the balancing Intents account down to about $2,600, so
Next year, they'll probably be asking for the time in their budget.
Yeah, so this is, this is to do what, is this like an ongoing, like, are we committing to these hours with this employee and we're gonna have to deal with it next year in a different way?
The hours have been funded in this fashion for probably at least past four or five years, so this is
They had already thought
These are the hours that the system has been working, because just three of them are funded in this fashion, the rest comes out of the general fund budget.
Okay.
As I recall, they didn't think they were gonna have money this year to fund it, and then they got more money in the Intents accounts, and so we have this every year that
I move the Board of Selectmen approve the use of $4,210.34 from the Wetlands Protection Aid Intents Account for the purpose of funding wages for the Conservation Commissioner's Administrative Assistant.
Your second? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? That also was unanimous.
And we've got the upcoming meeting scheduled, just July 9th, we've had a request from the Planning Board for a joint meeting to appoint an alternate member of the Planning Board, and I think there may be a vacancy of a full board member for the Planning Board in the near future as well, but they've asked to meet jointly with you on a night, and as far as the rest is scheduled, I'm not sure what dates we'll set along for the rest of the summer, but I think July 9th is, you know, I think you're pretty certain that it'll be our next meeting.
Anybody think they're not going to be available for that date?
July 9th?
July 9th?
Nope.
Okay, all right, so that will be the next meeting. I think we probably will be skipping the 13th, but let's, we'll keep that open until we have to close it.
I will plan to go sailing.
Yeah, it's not quite eight yet, we have 10 minutes, do have some dear committee, Jonathan.
Jonathan's here, and I think I owe him an apology, because I didn't get into the packet that revised RFP for the solar.
Oh.
I was on vacation last week, and I did this agenda about two weeks ago, I didn't get that in the packet, but in the meantime, you can fill you in as well, it's been a series of revisions, Tom Thompson looked at it as well. He's here, he might as well tell you.
As I recall, we reviewed it with them last time, and we said as long as there were no substantive major revisions, we were okay with it, but Jonathan.
Yes, so we completed the revisions, I believe, I sent you, Kate, a clean copy
Yes.
Of the final, it had the Town Council's changes for the lease and the PPA, and otherwise it was just minor wording changes here and there from what you looked at before. So we did get that submitted into the central registry, I believe it goes live tomorrow. Tim, did you get a response on that?
I got the confirmation that it's gonna be published, yeah.
Okay, tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay, so we have less than 24 hours if you need any last-minute changes, so, and yeah, I think we're ready to go, so we expect them all back on August 1st, and I think we'll plan a solar working group meeting shortly thereafter, so one of your early August meetings, you should plan to get a recommendation from the solar working group as to what company to go with, so either, I hope it's in August, you know, cross our fingers, so that's, that's the plan right now, we're kind of waiting. Other than that, I think the plan is, other than it's published in the central registry, we're planning on sending it to all the people that had previously picked up the version from 2018, so, any questions?
I have one question for you, but it has nothing to do with that.
Okay.
Would you be willing to be appointed to the Municipal Facilities Committee as the
We're putting you on the spot here.
I think, I don't think I have any more time.
Okay, well, because we really would like to have somebody from the Energy Task Force.
Yes, and although I'd love to help, I understand you guys meet early in the morning, and I have a child to get to school, so other than in the summer, I wouldn't be able to attend.
All right.
This was just a test of you, just to see if you got up and ran.
Yes, they already sucked me into three committees, and they're trying for a fourth, so.
Just one thing, we might wanna consider in terms of the schedule for the Board of Selectmen is that if you think it might be early August, and we think we might not have one on the 13th, we're not scheduled till the 27th of August to meet again, would that be problematic to wait that long?
It's the school that signs it, in this case.
It's the school that signs it, but I think what we need you to do is to authorize a particular company, and so we'll get them back on August 1st, that's 26 days, that's quite a, quite a time.
Yeah.
I think I'd prefer something sooner, but we
Well, we might, we might be moving
You can still meet on the 13th, we have a quorum.
We have a quorum, yes, I mean, that's why I haven't closed the meeting, because we have a quorum.
Yeah, okay.
And the only, yeah, and we clearly have something to do on that day, so
Yeah, so maybe you should just jot that down, Tim, that
Okay, we'll keep that on
Yeah, and also that we'll be
So the solar working group will prepare for you to have that, because if it's normally on a Tuesday, we'll need to get you the information by the Thursday before.
Yes.
So I think, yes, that'll work out exactly perfect if we do everything very efficiently.
Very good, keep us all on our toes.
I think always, right, yeah.
Excellent. Okay, I think it's close enough, and it looks like we have some members from our deer committee that we can invite up.
Get to come back.
Yes.
Do I get to sit this time?
Yes. Full chairs.
I think we have everybody that, you know, that could attend today, so.
No, that's great, no, no, it's perfect. So, as you know, we had town meeting petition article, which was not passed, but in the meantime, we've also had, you know, letters from various quarters suggesting that maybe we change the name of the committee, and I think, you know, we want to also talk about whether we're gonna go forward with another beta, you know, another test next year, and you know, unless it's not correct, when I reread the charter, it does look like we were supposed to have gone back to
Where can I find that?
Yes, in Section 5, under the Deer Control Committee, we were supposed to establish a proposed policy as to how the deer hunting might be implemented, which you guys did. Example topics were which parcels of land would be open to hunting, location restrictions within the parcels, qualifications of hunters, the permitting process, permitting fees, authority of the Conservation Commission, all of that you did.
Right.
The need for a game warden or another enforcement official, you also did, we had a deer agent, and any other aspects related to deer hunting that might be discovered during the process of investigating these matters. It's envisioned that the work product output by the working group would be a proposed set of regulations that would be brought before the Board of Selectmen, Board of Health, and Conservation Commission for comment, which you also did last year, or
Right.
The year before last.
Yeah.
It was last year.
Was it last year?
Yeah.
Well, and then after receiving comment from the various boards, at least one public forum which we held here in this room with this board was also held, hosted by the working group to discuss the proposed regulations with the public and receive feedback for incorporation into a final version to be brought before town meeting, that is what we didn't do at that point.
No, because we decided, as a board, we decided that we, we were authorized to go ahead and do a Pilot
Without doing that.
Without doing that, it was, it was a discussion that we had, I kind of feel now that it has been brought before town meeting.
And now it has again been brought before the
And, you know, and I think that, you know, the answer was fairly clear.
Yeah, well, we didn't do it at that point, but it is, now has been done, so I think this whole thing needs to be rewritten in certain respects, since a lot of this has already been done, and it's no longer, in certain respects, the charter of the committee, and I think we should keep these things up to date so that we all know what page we're on, and I'd like to know, I guess, from you, what you think the next steps should be.
But first, what was the request for the change in the title, was it to Deer Control Committee?
No.
What was it to?
They wanted deer hunt, I think, right?
To the hunt, right, because it said it's about hunting, it's not about controlling deer, it's about hunting.
It took deer out of the, out of the title.
Yeah, I think
I think we titled it the Carlisle Deer Committee, we didn't have hunt or control in there at all.
No, but we had, we had a proposal that we changed.
Somebody sent us a letter.
Somebody sent us a letter.
To change it to the Hunt Committee.
Deer, deer control is
Well, then that includes everything, this is all about
Okay, just, it was a proposal from one individual by letter.
I think the intent of the committee is to control the deer population herd by any means possible, it just happens to be that hunting is the only effective means, so.
So what I've done since, since then is I've been talking to the Town of Dover, we're kind of like following what they, they're probably started what, 10 years ago?
Yeah, at least 10 years ago.
And they told us that, yes, the first year is very difficult.
Yep.
I guess we all can agree with that.
[laughing]
But what they've done is, is reached out to the people in the town, because if you understand about hunting regulations, you can't hunt within 500 feet of anybody's house, doesn't matter whether they own the property or not, so that restricts the area that you can hunt, so they've sent letters to all the butters and the big landowners, asking them to allow hunting within 500 feet of their house, on, on either the town property or if they would allow even on their property, and I think that would probably be one of the next things we do, that I would propose to do.
So that's one of the suggestions that I've gotten also from other people in town, is we should not just restrict the deer committee to the town-owned lands, that we have people that own large parcels that can also step up and help manage the herd, they just need to be connected effectively with hunters if they're not hunters themselves, that personally was my problem.
And Dover did that too.
I didn't know any hunters, and I own nine acres, so, but then I found hunters compliments of this program, so now I have hunters, but I think we can do that more generally.
Mr. Perrin.
Yeah, Paul Pacheco. But is the purpose of tonight to review how the pilot went, and to
No, it's to talk about, because we're talking about appointments, and we're talking about the committee, and
Yeah.
Do we need to update the charter, do we need to update the title, do we need the same
I did also want to make sure that, because you guys really want to get going, and you really need
Yes, and we want to be appointed.
You really need to. I just wanted to, I wanted to make sure that we also, before you started meeting, that we kind of gave you some clear direction around
Right.
The feedback that we got
Right.
Regarding, you know, from, you know, just at town meeting, and, and that we've received since then, and, and maybe just give some guidance on, on the meetings, particularly meetings that sometimes can get testy.
Yeah, we really don't want them to go three hours.
Yeah.
So, I mean, yeah, so, it's hard to, I mean, I, you know, as chair last year, I mean, I appreciate giving people their voices, but you know, after a couple of meetings, we can't have two hours of public comment, it's just, because of the same things are repeated over and over again.
Right.
So some of the biggest challenges for us are misinformation that's out there, and we saw some of that at the town meeting, and we see, see some of that in, you know, in forums, whether it's mosquito or sitting in the woods, or
Right, and we experienced the same thing here.
And that's the toughest thing for us.
Every single day in community input, but, you know, and at some point you need to just say, look, you're not, you're not adding anything new, so, you know, you're just kind of wasting our time, but I think, I think it really is important that, that they feel like they've been heard.
Right, exactly.
And that they feel like what they're saying is being considered, rather than just what they may feel as being dismissed, however, it's also important that they understand that as a committee, you consider everything, and then you make the decision, and you don't want to just keep talking about it over and over again, because, you know, you have to move on, and somehow, somehow we need to figure out how to get past that, like, maybe if you get to that point, and people are still saying things, then maybe we do another joint meeting, and we invite those people in, and then we can say, you know, well, no, actually, you know, yes, Deer Control Committee, maybe we should consider that, or we could say, no, we think that they're on the right path, and that way you're getting the backing of, you know, so that you can, they can't say that there was, that they weren't heard, because they've been heard by two committees and gotten the feedback back, but I also think that there were some other things that were brought up that I just want to make sure that we really do look at.
Okay.
You know, like, I think it's important that we understand where all the deer stands are.
Yep.
And that if there are some there that are not tagged, we're taking some kind of action there, because I think that's a legitimate thing, if people are putting up deer stands that aren't a part of it, I think somehow we need to control that, somehow we need to, you know, either, you know, either we're tagging it, this is not, this is not a legal one, or, or some way of letting people know that we're on, on top of that, you know, other complaints that I heard was that, were, that some of the deer stands were actually, were facing the trail, now I get, a deer stand encompasses an awful long way around, and so they may not understand, but just making sure, technically, let's just make sure that they're not pointing towards a trail.
Yeah.
You know, it's a simple thing to do, you know, there's, there's a small nuance there, but as long as it's, technically it's not pointing in that direction, and then following up, if, if, if there is a deer kill, and the entrails are left
Yeah, that, that was the worst.
Yeah, we need to make sure that we're following up with those, those hunters, and, and somehow you guys work out, what is the penalty of doing that, and just making sure that there is a penalty.
Right, so we have, so there's immediate expulsion from the program, so we have, we have a couple, you know, things looking at last year, one is, you know, if you have, you know, entrails there, or also stands on private property, so if you're, you know, if you're not cited in your parcel, and they find a stand outside the parcel, I think there was one that was outside the boundaries there.
Yeah.
It was moved.
Yeah.
But just clear guidance from there.
But unintentional, did they, do you think they were kind of pushing the limit a little?
It's, you know, you've got, you've got your little handheld device, and how close is it?
Uh-huh.
Is it good to 10 feet, 10 yards?
But I think we can go by and we can GPS, you know, locate all the stands for the next year on that.
There are no
Yeah.
Markers out there.
Yeah, so I would think that, you know, you, you all might want to just go and look at them.
Yeah.
Right, and just say, yes, this one's okay, rather than, you know, just send them on
I mean, we have this technology that you can just send your coordinates to somebody, sort of on record, you know, your latitude, your longitude, and
Yeah, I think that
There's 10 million apps on
Yeah, if you just map it on Google Maps, here's where it is.
I have a question for you guys, other than suspension from the program, what authority do we have to manage the hunters if they do violate one of the rules?
Well, you approve the hunters.
No, I know, we approve the hunters, so we can suspend them from the program, can we do anything other than, like, fine them?
Right.
We would rather just kick them out.
I think you'd just rather suspend them.
I think it's a level of kickout, right, okay, we're not gonna give you one next year, or we're never gonna give you one again, type of thing.
So Dover
So that's the
Or you've lost, you've lost your right for the rest of this year.
Right.
Maybe for a more minor offense, and so I think it would just, you know, the number, the number
So we need to detail out what kinds of offenses fall into what category?
Right, yeah. And so it's really just trying to meet a lot of the needs, I think the signage, they had a really legitimate point on the signage.
Yes.
Let's spend a little bit more money on the signage, but speaking of money, ConsCon put, ConsCon was saying that this was taking them a lot of time, I'm not sure exactly why, but I'd like to understand
I don't know why, yeah.
I'd like to understand a little bit more about that, because
Permitting process, the processing of the 18 hunters.
Uh-huh.
I think I think what we're thinking about doing is just keeping the same people. As, as they...
That's, that's the model for Dover's, you know, we've done the query background, we've done the screening, we've done one-hour interviews with them in person, they've done their, you know, they've had their bow hunting test in person.
Yeah.
Unless they, you know, they violate something or they have a DUI, this is how Dover works, they stay in the program. So we have a relationship with the hunters and we have people that are, you know, very well-trained. Most of them have 20-plus years' experience that are in our program here, so they're not new hunters.
Yeah, so I would just say, we should, we should try to make sure that the fees that we're charging are covering our costs.
Yes, that's the other thing.
Which means maybe the first year is a higher cost, because we have to go through all this, you know, for a new hunter.
Right.
And, and then that even means more, that they don't want to kicked out, get kicked out of the program, right? Because they, they spent this, you know, this, this joining, I don't know what we would call it.
Initiation fee.
That first, that first one, but the intent of this...
Joining this exclusive club in Carlisle.
You know, when we were talking about the, the charges, we were thinking, oh, well, we're going to have to put up some signs, we're going to have to do, and so we were thinking, oh, it's going to cost very little. But I think we didn't think about all these other things. I think somehow we need to try to recoup some of those costs.
I'd say with a lot of infrastructure in place, I'd say, you know, that it's much more streamlined coming in the second year. So I would, you know, I would suspect that it would be more, you know, people would know what to do and they'd spend less time kind of scurrying.
I would just work with CONSCOM just to make sure that...
Oh, absolutely. No, I agree with them, I'm not trying to pass it off. So I designed the signs, I printed the signs, and so I spent $100 total on signs, you know, and our committee went through and put them all up, so it was the deer committee and fanned out and took a day each.
What input did you get from your hunters that they wanted to see different? I mean, I'm sure some, some hunters didn't ever see, get to shoot a deer. I mean, did, was, was the length of the season?
Well, I think what it is, is there, there's some places that, you know, we picked these, the reason we picked these spots were, the limiting factor was the parking areas, basically. And, and so, like, I had, I had Benfield. I thought it was a perfect place. I saw a deer one day, I must have been there easily a dozen times. But I, I took six deer in this town.
But the idea is not to impact the parking for people who want to use it recreationally too.
Yeah, we don't want to take, we want to take all the parking areas from everybody. The, the Davis corridor is...
There's a lot of deer in there.
There's a lot of deer, and that's what the, the deer agent, I mean, not the deer agent, the deer biologist for Mass Fish and Wildlife was showing us where a lot of these deer were. And he, that's one of the maps we have that shows that information, so.
The restaurant backyard.
Well, one of the criticisms was, you know, people didn't feel that they could walk some of the parcels. But if there was a parcel that's not getting much deer anyway, and you closed it off for walking, what if we don't use that parcel and we actually totally close off the, let's say, let's take the Davis corridor. What if we totally just, who say, there's no walking, no nothing, this is hunting from...
Do this, I have this, I saw, I picked it up in Sheldon, Vermont. Their old map from last year, in, you know, a place that's, you know, heavily impacted with deer, you know, Sheldon's a suburb of Burlington. And they just closed it off for certain days. They said, okay, you don't want to be walking here these certain days, because they, they got hunted.
That's a whole different kettle of fish.
I don't think we want to be sending that message.
I would caution against it.
We're saying that it's safe.
That's right.
And we don't then want to close it.
I agree.
However, maybe, maybe one way of dealing with it is, like, currently you can't, you can't hunt on Sunday?
Right.
So what if we just added a day?
So one of the, one thought we had...
What if there was one other day, not a Saturday, obviously?
No, actually, what the deer officer proposed is actually saying no hunting on Saturdays and then extending the season two to four weeks. So the reason...
So neither Saturday nor Sunday?
Neither Saturday or Sunday. And as a compromise, you get two to four more weeks in the end.
And we didn't, we didn't take any deer the first two weeks of the season, which was October 1st, which, this is the first, well, last year was the first year that the Commonwealth did that, that they extended the season just in eastern Massachusetts, because there's so many deer. There's just so many deer.
Now, the two to four weeks goes into shotgun and muzzleloader season, but I don't want misinformation in the public saying, now we're authorizing shotgun or muzzleloading. What the public needs to know very clearly is that bow hunting is allowed during the entire season, the shotgun and muzzleloader and the, and so when they say, oh, you're using that season, some of, some people will write, well, now people are going to be shotgunning for two weeks. No, it's not the case. Meaning, we're just saying we're pushing into, you know, the winter season.
Yeah.
Which, which is less desirable in some ways, because, you know, the deer aren't rutting and, you know, but some people like to hunt them, and then people would get some Saturdays and, so that was a thought.
Could we add Saturday and make it a two-week extension?
We could.
Another one of the suggestions was to simply not have any hunting going on between, like, 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM on any day.
Yeah.
Because most of the deer are moving around in the dusk and dawn hours.
It's early morning, it's early morning.
So hunters don't really want to be out there anyways, and so if people are concerned, then they, they can be walking that time.
These are things that, you know, we definitely shouldn't be talking about.
Yeah, I think if you could tighten that up for...
And make sure the signage is very clear.
Yep. So one challenge in the signage is, you know, is the conservation, the large permanent signs, and this is one thing we rested last year on, you know, you don't want to tape over those and damage the writing that are on the conservation, the CONSCOM signs. So we...
So what did you do last year?
So we have other, you know, signs saying, this is, you know, a special, you know, hunt, this is going on right now, and very, you know, very prominent every trailhead. You know, we approved the sign and the font through town council.
How did you put them up?
What do you mean?
How did you attach them?
Oh, they were nailed to trees.
Ah.
They're laminated, so they're waterproof.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they were still, there's confusion saying, I saw a conservation sign, it doesn't match this. It's a handful of people. But conservation is worried that, you know, if you actually put something over their sign that you peeled back off, you might ruin the lettering, and those are rather costly. So that, that was something, that was something we didn't resolve last year on the large conservation.
Could you talk to them about staples? That doesn't peel off.
Yeah.
I mean, and it just leaves a little...
Just work it out with CONSCOM.
That's what I'm saying.
Just to get back to how this was initiated, because also, some of these properties have conservation restrictions on them, where it says there's no hunting. But this is, then there's a caveat in the restriction saying that if there is damage being done to the environment, then this type of activity of culling the animal or doing things like that, so it's not really considered hunting, but it's hunting.
Yeah, of course.
I mean, you're saying the conservation restriction allows that exemption?
Yes, yes.
And that might be something worth including in what, how you're trying to educate people about this, you know? Maybe you work with the mosquito to do a couple of articles.
And that's why, when you say, well, we're allowing hunting, well, you're basically, you're, you're taking care of species that's overpopulated, that's, that's causing, you know, irreparable damage to the ecosystem.
I would say, talking to, you know, parents and school, you know, kids who walk around there, you know, telling them, you know, as far as their relative danger, because they, you know, they read things and they get, you know, very frightened, you know? I mean, you realize that a hunter only fires two, maybe three arrows in a day. It's not like you're going in, even if you're a dog was walking on the trail, you're not going to likely have arrows whizzing over your head. It's a very stationary, I mean, the deer was not running, if a kid or if something darted out, you don't, you don't shoot a moving object, blurring across. If people are very quiet, they're sitting in a tree, they're firing down.
One other issue that came up frequently and with some vehemence was the use of cameras. And I understand, but it's, again, it's an issue, and I don't know with the, whether it's legitimate...
And that's, and that's a state thing, right? I mean, the state allows, you can have observation cameras in trees or any public property anywhere, really.
Okay, okay.
That's the answer to that one.
Now, do I, do I think it's kind of creepy or disturbing that you could have, you know, trailheads and just be, you know, taking tapes? And I think it is, but I mean, it's nothing that really is, you know, it's not a town-endorsed activity. People can put game things to watch, you know, wildlife feed, et cetera. I mean, they could use it for nefarious purposes, but it's not prohibited by state.
And we're, oh, and we would not be allowed to say in the way that we're prescribing that the stand is not facing the trail, you know? We could be prescribed that the camera is facing away from the trail?
Well, this is, this is, this is the town land, and you guys are in charge. Have you seen no trail cameras?
No. Now, the trail cameras can be put up by other people, not just the hunters. Anybody in town could put up a camera.
Right, let me just see if this is, if there's a trail camera, just ask them to put a yellow sign up that just says, hey, there's a trail camera here, because the deer can't read it.
It's sort of like a misnomer. People think they're on the, the walking trails. They're not on the walking trails, they're on the deer trails. Why do too many people walk on the deer trails?
As long as there's a sign, I think that eliminates the ability to have a concern about it.
It's not a hidden...
It's not a hidden camera, just, let's just put up an obvious...
But we would point out, it's not just, not just the 18 hunters that are, you know, putting them up in town.
But then it would be clear, right? If there's one without a sign, you know it's not a hunter.
Yeah, if you put, if you put a sign up above the camera, the deer can't read.
But if they do find a camera without a sign, what does the town do about it? Right, I mean, they certainly are not doing anything.
I think all we have to just do is verify that, you know, hey, it's not near a deer cam, so it's not a hunter's...
Right.
You know, I'd be...
Well, could we ask...
There isn't, there isn't a law that says you can't have a deer cam on town, on our town-owned property.
That's right.
Right. We could have a policy that the deer cams do not have the walking trails within their sightline.
You could, I mean, you could, you could pass a town...
Because that's not what you want to look at anyway, so that wouldn't be onerous for the...
You could pass the town guidelines that supersede the state guidelines.
Yeah.
The state guidelines say anybody, I mean, you could, I could come into town, I'm not a deer hunter, and put a camera up anywhere, and nobody legally should be able to take it down, because you're following state regs.
So I think if you guys could just think a little bit more about that.
We thought, we thought, yeah.
Again, I'm not trying to...
Give you the feedback, and then you come back and tell us how you're going to address it.
So, you know, this is the first time I've ever heard people discuss this, about trail cams, that they're really concerned about them. But yeah, I mean, I can see people's point, definitely, you know?
So, so we're considering actually, just based on the deer officer, reducing the traffic in Davis, even taking it from six to four, and then adding one in Conant and one in Town Forest. Just, this is, you know, kind of as a first, you know, thought for moving things around. Now, we realize that, you know, members of the public may not be happy about that as well, right? Because it moves things, you know, into somebody else's, you know, terrain where, you know, they'll have strong opinions as well.
The important thing is that we're addressing some of the concerns. We're trying things.
Right.
It's a pilot. This is a second-year pilot, we got, you know, we're just trying.
Greeno was light, so Greeno most likely would be, you know, be less people there. We're, we're really worried about, you know, right along the river where we hear stories, you know, which is by the federal thing, you know, Foss Farm, is that walkers from Carlisle have been threatened by people saying, you know, he says, he says, I don't, I don't shoot first and ask questions later, as somebody was told, but my friend up the, up the trail, he's not so nice.
A bow hunter?
Yes.
These are the hunters on the...
Federal land.
Federal land.
I was in that, I was in that program. There's no vetting. You send them the money and they give you the permit, that's it, you never talk to anybody. They're not looking at you, they just, they want to just know what your license number is, and, but they do the same thing we do with a permit on your dashboard, sort of parking permit.
Yeah.
But the wildlife management or the, you know, refuge, it's much different than our, our property. It's law, it's, I think it was during the Clinton administration, they reevaluated using it for other purposes other than, than for, you know, migratory waterfowl. They says, okay, it says, these properties are being, you know, detrimented by deer, so they opened it up to hunting. They, they stopped people riding bikes and their horses through it, and you can't go off the trail. The only people who go off the trail are the hunters, so they think they own. And then they see people walking there and they just...
Then we received a couple emails last year, since they were really quite frightened.
On more than two occasions, people complaining about...
But that's not inside, you know?
And so the first thing that they ended, that agent was, was, well, you're going to have to talk to the federal people.
Right, so just to be clear, this is outside, you know, our jurisdiction? It's outside of your jurisdiction and it's on great meadows?
But it's in Carlisle.
It would be important to help people understand that, because some folks don't.
Exactly, because they may, that will be brought up and, you know, we'll be tarred with the same brush, you know?
That's why, that's why.
I'm telling you, these hunters that we vetted, they're, they're all great. I mean, the fellow who left the entrails, I'll tell you exactly why, he's, you know, old dog. We know that you leave them there, they're gone. They're gone the next day. Well, sometimes they're not, you know, but this is, it's a different kind of hunting. This is suburban hunting, you just, you can't leave the entrails there.
During, during the interviews, we did clearly talk to each hunter about that, so that it's not that the person hadn't been told at first, because we said, this is an urban area and you carry them out, and so we were clear, it's just...
Yeah, we had understood.
It was just the last...
And he understands that if it ever happened again, he's out.
That's right.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Two, two strikes. There's no, no three-strike rule on that one.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to have that problem.
Well, it's really just a one-strike rule, because we're just putting things very clearly outlined for expulsion for the second year.
I mean, there's other people complaining, oh, there was entrails, but was it someone hunting, one of our hunters? It was off someplace, I mean, if you look at the statistics, there was 40-something deer killed and 10 were killed in this, that's 30 other plus deer that were killed, so.
By hunters that were not, were vetted hunters?
That are hunting on private property.
I see.
Private, yeah, private property.
Or on the wildlife, or if you do.
And again, the federal property, they don't care about that. See what I mean? It's like, private property, they don't care if you leave the entrails there. It's like, private property, they don't care if you leave the entrails there. This is, this is something that, you know, it's like the agents from Dover told us that first year, it's, you gotta, you know, you're going to break some eggs here, you know? There's going to be some, there's some problems. This is how we're working them out, and I think it, I think it's going to be, if we continue with this, I think it'll be successful.
I mean, the key is to make it smooth, and also just also for the board as well, or the, you know, the committee, right? I mean, we had, you know, resignations, you know, after the first year, and that was, you know, difficult, especially key boards like, you know, trails and conservation. So that was tough.
And did they resign because it was just not a pleasant experience?
They just sent a letter saying, effective immediately, I'm resigning, and I think one was, you know, said family duties, but, yeah.
Well, I can tell you, I was a civil servant for almost forty years, and I've never seen anything like this before, you know, on the deer committee. Wow, you know, I mean, so, yeah, I mean, it's a, some people just get very upset about this, and I can understand.
You can't say we're not nervous. I mean, sometimes it's a safety issue, too. I mean, yeah, we hear some of the stuff, the passionate stuff, especially at town meeting, and you're just thinking, I don't know how safe this is to have these meetings sometimes.
We can call them in any time.
But you had said that Scott Barnes, that brings me to a very specific thing, yes. So do we need to take a look at that, Todd, because you had said he didn't come to the meetings. I'm sure he may have.
We saw him maybe once or twice, right?
Yeah, maybe once or twice.
Yeah, it would be useful to have the police as part of it, and somebody who could attend at least, you know, half the meetings. It would be nice just to show that, you know, we have some type of, you know, law enforcement and.
And did anybody reach out to him to see if he was going to participate again?
I sent emails in the last month. I didn't get any response.
Yeah. Do we know anything, Tim, about how that works, or could we ask?
I could bring it up to the chief.
Yeah, ask the chief if he could identify someone that would be able to participate. Yeah.
All right. So Kate, are we going to ask them to take another look at this charter?
I think, yes, because all that top stuff, I think, has to be gone. So let's, would you?
Help us update the charter.
Update, you know, look at this charter. I can give you my copy.
Is that posted somewhere, or?
I'll give you my copy.
It'd be good to have that for, you know, for the deer officer, too, because he's been traveling, and I want to make sure, yeah, I mean, he's.
Just take a look.
He's very dedicated.
Another copy.
There you go.
So I have one other question for you guys. Part of the feedback was that we didn't take many deer. We only took ten on the public land. Should we be trying to find ways to be more effective at how many deer we take?
I think you can't. An end of one isn't a very good data sample.
Right.
Right.
The feedback we got from the Department of Fish and Wildlife is that was actually quite a high number of deer. They were surprised by the number we did take in those areas, suggesting that they were actually quite high in those areas. The fact that we actually got one or two or three, and some of those mile parcels, yeah.
Was it one per hunter?
One guy got three.
Okay.
But there were a total of ten taken, and we had eighteen hunters.
Yeah.
So I've known him for a long time. He says, we took our hunter safety course back in nineteen sixty-seven. Was it sixty-seven? Yeah, we're both fifteen. So he's, we're both sixty-five now. He's got three.
I had deer hunters on my property. I had a hundred and twenty acres, and I had deer hunters every morning, and, you know, they didn't take that many deer in the full season.
Right. I'm just wondering, you know, if we should be doing things like, the hunters aren't there all the time, so we only had eighteen, but we had like twenty-some applicants. Should we consider having a more density of hunters in the plots that we, you know, do?
I would be cautious.
I would say, let's make sure that this year we're addressing the needs and maybe taking another look at the hours, and then get another year behind, you know, another year of statistics of the take, and then figure out whether or not we should increase it. That would just be my recommendation.
I think, you know, given four acre parcels per person, it gives them a lot of room where they can put the stand in an appropriate place away from the trails. If you start packing people in there, they'll get, you know, they'll get kind of wedged in near trails because they want to keep their distance from other hunters, so.
Yeah.
We spend a lot of time going over the parcels, and you will talk about it, you know, as far as.
I knew both the hunters personally who were behind here, and they did see a lot of deer in the corner. They were going in places where it was tough for them to get at them, so. And that fellow I was talking about, the one got the three, he said he could have got a lot more if he moved the stand. So, so there you go. It's like, okay, are we going to, okay, I take the stand, do I move it, do I get more? And it's like, it's, there's a lot of variables here. It's a lot of things for us to look at to how to manage this.
Yeah.
But it's, you know, we've got these, these are very manageable parcels, and again, the limiting factor is the parking spots.
Yeah, okay. So I have just one more grammar for, I don't know if it's a suggestion or not, but, so it sounds like you've got some good ideas about things you might change this time around to meet the needs of some of the people that had concerns, but also just, you know, how to make the thing run more smoothly. So have you thought about, so how is, are you going to meet as a committee and come up with a plan for this next pilot, and then allow for some comment? I mean, I think, even though I know it was very difficult, you know, last year and the year before, and then a lot of, you know, passion, I think it would be smart, you know, to send the message that here are the things you're considering, you're trying to address the comments that you heard, and give community members a chance to give some feedback. And again, even as, you know, Nathan was saying, you might ultimately decide, we're not going to do that, we're not going to follow somebody's feedback, but at least you give them the opportunity to comment on your new plans.
And I guess the question is, what, you know, what level of form do you have that up? Because, you know, every meeting for the deer committee is posted in the mosquito, and we do get the same people, the people to come, and they're certainly welcome to comment at that stage. Or do you have something that's more, you know?
Well, I was just thinking, Todd, that if you, if you had a new plan, you know, a revised plan for the pilot this fall, second year of the pilot, that you put that out, maybe it's through the mosquito somehow, and say, and you could either say at our next deer committee meeting, we're going to, you know, we're going to.
Well, half hour, you could say, we'll have, open it up for a half an hour or two to take public comment.
Something like that.
Different than a public hearing. It's just a public comment.
Yeah.
You know, just do a letter to the editor or something, just saying, hey, we're going to be having this. Doesn't have to be a special night or anything. Just, it's just like making sure people know it's happening.
And they have here ahead of, they see ahead of time what it is you're, you know, you've been, you're thinking of doing this year. Because I think the things you've described will definitely be sending the message that you're hearing the feedback, and you're trying to address it.
Yep.
So in the meantime, we need to reappoint this committee, and I gave my chart, sorry?
Yeah, the two people that resigned, are they listed on here, or did we take them off? Okay.
They're taken off. They've been replaced.
So, okay. Well, well done, getting replacements.
Yes, can I?
Alex, are you one of them?
Get a motion.
I move the board of selectmen to appoint Todd Thorson from 301 Hanover Street, Alex Parra, 31 Bellas Hill Road, Jonathan DeCock, 130 Oak Knoll Road, DeShawn Bojanik, 93 Clark's Farm Road, I'm sorry, I'm tired, so I'm having a hard time enunciating, John Keating, 133 Forest Park Road, Sergeant Scott Barnes from the Police Department, and Barney Arnold from some number.
Two-two-five Lowell.
Two-two-five Lowell Road as the board of selectmen representative, all for terms to expire June 30th, 2020, to the deer control committee.
And we're not changing the name. Okay, well, I mean, we needed to get that out.
Now, are we okay designating Sergeant Scott Barnes, but then having somebody else?
Yes, until, and we can always change it later.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. There's, I heard a motion. I already heard, got a second from Alan. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That's unanimous, so that's another committee down.
Thank you for taking us on another year.
Yeah, thank you. I guess I'll be with you.
Who was on the other side of that?
We'll make a good year.
So we have to go get sworn in, right?
Yes, yes. You do need to be sworn in. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you very much. All right, we have some remaining town boards to appoint. We have a recommendation from the Affordable Housing Trust to appoint Beverly Shory of Toffett Road, George Payne of Benfield, Maureen Cosgrove of Benfield, and, that was it. And that was it.
And not reappoint.
And not reappoint Kate Reed.
Second.
That was the, yeah, okay.
And did you say?
I said, that was the recommendation to do, so you're making that, you're saying, that's our motion?
That's our motion.
Okay, so he's making the motion.
And did you specify the term?
Term for one year.
For one year.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and Nathan just seconded that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Board of Registars, we got a letter from the Democratic Town Committee that they had a vote, and they nominated Ruth.
Helen Hurley?
Sorry, Helen Hurley. I don't have a.
Don't have a vacant position.
For one of the registrars for the Democrats, because they have to have.
Has to be by party.
Has to be by party, and she'll be taking Cynthia Swuppi's position.
So I move that we appoint Ellen K. Hurley, 392 School Street, to the Board of Registars for a term of three years to expire in 2022.
Second.
Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right. Complete Streets, we have lost the entire committee. I have been notified by Melinda Gagnino that they are moving to Concord.
Oh, my goodness.
So that one, and.
Oh, my goodness.
So we don't have a committee there anymore.
It's a good thing Luke's on that committee from us, so he can just take.
What I was, what I was thinking is that we really.
Make it a committee of one.
We should conflate that with the Complete Streets, because it still makes sense.
Already overlapped with them.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. So I think we just, we don't have a Pathways for a while, a little while.
Pathways, or?
Pathways, too.
Don't have a Pathways, because all of our Pathways people are gone, but we do have the Complete Streets Committee, and they will take over the Pathways function as well, because it makes sense that it's a Complete Street, they're looking at Pathways as well as, they're looking at all forms of pedestrian and vehicular traffic, so I don't see the point of having two committees at this point.
Okay, and we were rewriting the Complete Streets. Did we finish that last time?
We did, didn't we? But I don't remember whether we voted it.
I don't think that you presented.
No.
Why don't we ask Luke to combine the two and recruit people and.
Well, I don't think we have to.
We have some people on Complete Streets, though, right?
Oh, in fact, I have, I have.
Passes.
Yeah, yes. I actually have notes to give to Luke on the Complete Streets Charter. Okay, so I'll talk to Luke about that. Cranberry Bog Working Group, oh, that went with the back of my.
Yeah, here, you want to look at that?
Yes. It looks like we're all ready to make those nominations.
So I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Luke O'Scalillo, 84 Craig Circle, Warren Lyman, 516 Cross Street, Susan Provenzano, 80 Milpon Lane, Kenneth Belitz, 112 Johnson Road, John Ballantyne as an associate member, Steve Hinton, I'm sorry, John Ballantyne, Associate, 683 Fisk Street, Steve Hinton, Associate, 684 East Streets, to the Cranberry Bog Working Group for a one-year term to expire June 30th, 2020.
Second.
And hopefully they'll have some sort of resolution at the end of that year. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That one's done. Council on Aging, we're ready to make those.
I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Jerome Lerman of 218 Stern Street, Robert Loma of 42 Palmer Way, Abha Singhal, 265 Kimble Road, Carol Fiorentino, Associate, 43 Aaron Way, John Ballantyne, Associate, 268 Fisk Street, Elizabeth Blajarski, Associate, 145 Church Street, and Ann James as Associate, 30 Baldwin Road, for a term of.
Four associates.
The first three for three years, and the associates for a term of one year.
Yeah, and by the way, that's the three regular members with terms expiring June 30th, 2022, in the middle section. Should say 2022. Yeah, okay. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Deer Committee, we've taken care of. Household Recycling Committee.
So deer control is going to stagger terms.
Yes.
And it looks like, so does this move mean they're, are they, it says Rob Perry and Lana Zamarro are the applicants, but they weren't, is that because she wants to extend, they want to extend their term to 2022? Is that the idea?
Right.
And then change Rob's to 2020? Is that the, is that what they're, is that what you want to do?
And Bob Wahlhagen and Dan Shulten for 2020.
Yeah, and then leave Bob and Dan, and they're staying as they are. Okay. So I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint to.
So you have one person expiring, one person, and then two?
Right. Yep. Actually, one person expiring in 2020, then two in 2021, and then one in 2022.
They're going to stay here.
Yeah, okay. I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint to the Household Recycling Committee, Rob Perry, 32 East Riding Drive, for a term, for his term to expire June of 2020, and Lana Zamarro, 398 Lowell Street, for a term to expire in June of 2022.
Second.
Second.
Okay. All right. Oh, sorry. We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pathways we're not doing, because everybody has either resigned or is moving out of town. Okay. All right. Town Board of Committees, Board of Officers, Board of Selectmen Policy and Guideline, 845. Do we have an update about our transfer station stickers?
Only that I have started the process of gathering the information, so the, please to Mark, he has the records of how many stickers and at what price, and so I was going to gather that information, and Priscilla said when she's done with this year-end stuff, I could go with her about. And Gary, I've tried to connect with him a couple times, but we haven't been able to do so, so I'll keep on that.
And I was planning on, when we're ready to get that going, to invite Priscilla to the table as well, because currently the stickers are very constricted in what we can use them for.
The money for.
The money for.
Yeah.
So we might have to re, you know, like, close that program down and open a whole new program, and this is something that we might actually want to be talking with the FinCom as well, I don't know, but.
New purpose for the.
A new purpose for the revenue and expanding it and seeing.
Yeah, and I'll, Priscilla mentioned that when I talked to her, so I will find out more about the specifics of that, too.
Okay. Do we have an update about the Computer Email and Internet Use Policy?
Yes.
Wow.
No, don't get excited.
Oh, okay.
I started revising an existing policy.
Can I just ask one?
Sure, try.
When you're talking about expanding, you're talking about covering other expenses? Is that?
Yes, yes, possibly. We don't know. We just, we have to talk about our policy and whether, yeah.
And we should probably include your input, right?
We certainly will, but we just, you know, we need, we're just at the beginning of this whole process.
Pretty good.
Yeah, I mean, essentially, both Nathan and I were going to, we were trying to modify existing policies, so we're not reinventing the wheel.
Yeah.
The policy I chose to revise is the one from my institution, which includes all kinds of patient data and HIPAA and all kinds of other things. So I have more redacted out than I have left in.
Okay, yeah.
But it's also, we really need to, things like who's going to be the information officer? Who handles this kind of thing? These are all things that have to be decided, so I think it's more involved than simply taking an existing policy and changing some wording.
Right.
The question is, who does what?
Yeah.
When, and how do you do that? So I think we still have to get together. Nathan was not available for part of it, and I, neither was I. I was away for two weeks.
It's literally at least an all-summer project.
Oh, no, it's not going to be done yesterday, but.
But we've got stuff to start with, and we will continue.
Yeah, but also, it sounds like we should, you know, if we need an information officer, that would be a staff decision, no?
Well, or.
Not a new person, it's just somebody who's designated as the person.
Ancillary duty, yeah.
Who ensures that the policy is updated, ensures that people know the policy.
Yeah.
Yeah, well.
It's not, they don't even make.
And who handles when people violate the policy?
Information security. They're just the administrator of making sure that people are trained and that it's updated annually. But information security policy must be updated annually.
Okay. All right, yeah. Good. Moving on to the policy and guideline review. Well, we see, we were talking about the, sorry, we just did the amendments to Personnel bylaw.
Yep.
That's a hefty little packet.
Did we skip over discussing of the technology group as to whether it was going to be a committee or a working group?
Oh, we did.
Oh, sorry, I missed that. You're right. Okay, yes.
We can just continue this one and go back to it, just for. Can we just continue this one and go back to it, just for flow?
Yeah, no, let's, let's do that first. Let's discuss this Technology IT Committee or Working Group. You want to say something about it, since you've been on it?
Well, I was on it when it was a committee.
When it was a committee.
And I've kind of been on it since it's a working group. I could say, you know, we're not, we're doing, my opinion, and the reason why I talked to Tim about making it just a working group, is it's, it's really inwardly focused on the staff and the services that are provided to the staff, and the tools that the staff use. And therefore, we needed to be able to meet kind of really quickly. Tim needed to be able to pull us together whenever he wanted to. And, you know, we do, we report back to, or Tim reports back to the Board of Selectmen. But it just, it just seemed like, in order for us to be nimble and get things done, since we were focusing on staff needs, that it made sense for Tim, as the Personnel Director, to be able to have that flexibility to put together this team, pull them together when he needs to, because a lot of it's actually done by a consultant. It's not done by us.
Yeah.
And, and we're just there kind of as an advisory group, and meeting with them and just making sure. And so I personally feel that having it something that's completely under Tim's direction, helping him get his job done from a staff in technology management is a better way of approaching it. But I don't know what you feel, Tim.
I, I think it does make it more flexible to operate in that fashion. I think we're at the point where we, we need to focus on some new projects, because we did, we've done the website, we did the Wi-Fi, the email, you know, going to the exchange for all the employees. I think going forward, maybe looking at the phone systems, or GIS would be the next. Or also going to, you know, replacement of a lot of, you know, hardware now, you know, to kind of keep up with it, so we're not, you know, replacing 20 computers one year, and then, you know, five years later, they're all crap, and you're going to do it again, so.
Yeah.
But I think it, you know, I think it does lend itself, you know, more easily to a working group. And we've had members kind of drop in and drop out, and, you know.
More drop out than drop in.
Well, it's hard to, yeah, it's hard to maintain a core of, you know, formal committee members, people that can kind of, David Freeman was part of our working group for a while there, in the Webtooth Project.
Right, and the beauty of that was, you were just able to ask him to join. But if it's a committee, it has to go through-
Oh, yeah, it's all machine gas.
She makes sense, yeah.
But, yeah, so-
But I do think that, just as a matter of course, you did, did you or did you not post that we were going to be meeting?
I think, I think we did.
Yeah, just-
They weren't, you know, formal.
Right, but if anybody wanted to know, that, we weren't hiding the fact that we were meeting.
Right.
Okay.
And we haven't met in a long time, anyway, so nobody's missing anything.
Yeah, no, I, I understand, but that's why, in fact, this is on the agenda, because I think some meetings need to start happening, you know, we need the phone.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's-
And it's time.
Yeah.
It's time to start to-
I think it's a matter of people who have time and interest in doing it, and that's, that's been short supply on this particular topic.
Right, okay.
So it's, it's basically been Tim, Bill, and I, right, and David Mackay.
Yes.
Boy, in this town, there ought to be a lot of expertise in this area.
Yeah, there's Bill who?
Bill Mackay. Yeah.
And we've put it out many, many times.
If there's ever a committee and you want to know who it is, it's Bill.
Yeah, but Bill, I think, is trying to-
We've had a number of people join, but they're, they're only there for one or two meetings.
Uh-huh, they haven't stuck with it.
Yeah.
Well, I think you should just start, you know, re, maybe find some new people, you know, invite some new people.
Yeah.
And reinvigorate it and see where you can-
A school's technology guy, Scott Heffner, has been part of it for a couple of years.
Yeah, that's helpful.
That's helpful, yeah.
Okay.
So we're going to keep it a working group.
So, Tim, how else would you go about trying to recruit some new people? I'm just thinking about some of the younger folks in town that are involved in, you know, do tech work. It might be good on this. Do you post it, or send something to the mosquito to invite?
We'd do as we would for a formal committee.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Advertise for our working group members, yeah. Maybe it seems less of a formal commitment, if you, to be part of a working group, rather than signing up for, you know, a committee. So I can, I can certainly do that.
One thing that's a little bit different about this committee is that it's not a committee where you go to a meeting and you kind of decide what we may be doing. It's a committee where you go to a, a meeting, decide what we may be doing, and then you go and do the work.
Yeah, that's, yes, exactly.
That's why it's called a working group.
And it's real work. It's a massive time commitment.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So you got the sense of that, so we need to do any, anything else on that.
Yeah.
Amendments to the Personnel Bylaw.
This is something that I discussed with Alan and Kate a few weeks ago. With the Board's permission, I would take on as a task provisions to the Personnel Bylaw. I think the way that the bylaw is set up is, and the Personnel Board, which we've had trouble staffing for a number of years, are the, more or less the decision-makers regarding everything related to personnel. And as Personnel Director, I'm kind of the staff person to the committee, I'm a resource to them. I think it might be more effective if the Personnel Director were the one making the decisions, and the committee were more of a resource to the personnel, to the director. So I'd like to take a shot at making provisions to that. I think it would, it would certainly keep things moving along. It's, you know, periods where we might not have a full complement of Personnel Board members. It wouldn't, things wouldn't grind to a halt, for surely, in the personnel area, because the Personnel Director would still be empowered to make decisions. And a lot of the smaller requests for additional hours and job descriptions. I think for the larger things, the committee is helpful when, you know, we do a full salary compensation classification study, working with a consultant. I think it makes sense to do it with the Personnel Committee, with the full board.
Yeah.
I think a lot of the, kind of, the day-to-day, you know, personnel decisions, you know, various matters, I think it would be more effective if the Personnel Director were the one empowered to make those decisions. It wouldn't be advice and consent of the, not, you know, operating outside of the Personnel Board, but, you know, with them, as more of a resource. So kind of changing the relationship potentially. And it would be a bylaw that would have to go to town meeting, be approved, so.
So this, the policies is a bylaw?
Personal, no, it's a policy.
That's the policy. The policies the Board approves, the Personnel Bylaw is-
That's the thing at the, yeah, we did get it.
These are the policies.
The Board can, can make revisions to, and, and, the policies are actually due for an update. And you'll see the last revision date is February 2012, so that's another document that we need to-
Can I just see your first page, because I, uh...
Oh, yeah, it says on here, it's page, the bylaw is...
Yeah, there's both the Personnel Policy and the Bylaw. The Bylaw's a town meeting, actually.
Yes.
Policies to the Selectmen.
And, and the bylaw also does need to be looked at. I guess, maybe that's what I was looking at. That's what I had in my bag.
You wanted to look at the bylaw, not the Personnel Policies?
Can I have your, that, no, I'm sorry. Jen, what I gave you back. I'm wondering if that, what I, if what I gave you was the policy, if I have the... What I had under Section 30, I thought, was the Personnel Policy.
I think it is.
Oh, yeah, no, okay, I have the bylaw.
Yeah.
Okay, so I was actually looking at the bylaw. Yes.
The purposes both need to be reviewed.
They do. First of all, the bylaw mixes, interchanges, um... No, that's in the policies. In the policies, for instance, on page 11, they talk about Town Administrator, Town Administrator, Personnel Administrator, Personnel Administrator.
Right, it needs to be consistent.
It needs to be consistent, so things like that. That was in the policy, was not in the bylaw.
Looking for your authorization, kind of, on that and bring the provision back to you.
I, I think that's a, personally, I think it's a great idea. This is something you would look with, work with on, potentially with our, I always forget the council who does the...
Labor Council?
Labor Council.
Can I ask the sample list?
Yes.
Yes, that's probably why I forget.
And who, the fellow who worked on, on the fire chief selection, is the first HR guy.
Oh, Mark, Mark Way.
Mark Way, might be a good, good person to work with.
Yeah, he's, he's good.
Yeah.
So that means that we do need to look at the bylaw, because-
Yeah, I think that's where it's all-
That's where the, that's, yes.
The Personnel Board.
Yes, and then, so anyway, I have a bunch of notes whenever you get to it. I'd love to just tell you what I've-
Looking for the Boards.
Yes.
That's Personnel Administrator, go ahead and improve our personnel processes.
The Personnel Board is in here, 313-
Yeah, no, I've got both of them, that's why I, yes, I, yeah, I have both of them. Okay.
Well, um, yeah.
So, yes, I, I think you have the sense of the Board that this is really a good idea. Okay.
So you're going to look at, at the policies as well as the bylaw?
Yes.
Yes, we have to, because the policies are, like, driven by the bylaw. So we have to look at the bylaw first, then the policies will fall into line.
Yeah, and I'll just give you some of my notes on the section about the sexual harassment policy. I don't know if you've looked at that, but that, I just had a bunch of specifics about, you know, I think some things that needed to be added. I mean, you probably have some boilerplate now that, from what was in there.
It's contained, since it was first adopted.
Yeah, I think they would have, yeah.
So all of this needs to be kind of cleaned up.
Yeah.
All right. We're done?
Minutes.
Oh, minutes. Sorry, well, I meant with the big stuff. Liaison reports first.
Anybody's liaisons? Oh, I did the, yeah, I did the recycling.
Well, we, you-
While I didn't get to attend their meetings, I've gotten a lot of feedback from the Board of Health on Benfield.
Uh, yes.
It's a mess, and actions need to be taken on that. And I'll go to the next meeting and see where they are on it, find out what's going on.
Okay.
And also address the issue of succession planning.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the Benfield, at least now, the trust has standing, so they can-
Right.
And by extension, we, I think, have-
Not you anymore.
No, not me anymore. But the Selectmen, by extension, the Selectmen, have standing now to enforce that ground lease and, you know.
Right.
We need recommendation control.
And I think that's what the trust needs to put up, up front and center, is, is being active around getting Benfield straight now.
Yep.
Okay. Any others?
Well, the other was Council on Aging, which we'll work on separately.
Yeah. Okay. I was at municipal facilities meetings, but we're going to probably come in under budget on the police station.
All right.
I saw that.
And we're very happy about that, and we are interviewing project managers, you know, so we're moving forward on that. Whole scene. The DPW is still a mess. So, more later. Approval of minutes. I sent some amendments to Jennifer.
As did I.
Were they substantive ones?
Uh, they were editorial.
Edit, edit. Okay, so-
And they have been corrected. I've amended minutes, took all my comments into account.
And mine were more or less editorial, too, I think, so.
I made the Board of Selectmen approve the minutes Tuesday, June 11th, 2020. As a number.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that was unanimous.
I move adjourned.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. That's the loudest ayes we had all night.
Well, nine o'clock, not too bad.